All right, I have seven o'clock, so we can get started. Tonight is May 24th, 2022. It is 7:00 PM. The Hingham Select Board is called to order. Want to note that this meeting is being held remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, temporarily amending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the Open Meeting Law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the Chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20F, so that the Chair may inform all other participants of said recording. Is anyone recording this meeting that I need to be made aware of? Seeing none, I would know for the record that participated in tonight's meeting are myself, Bill Ramsey, Joe Fisher, and Liz Klein. First item on the agenda is approval of the minutes. Joe and Liz, are you ready to go?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, I'll take a motion.
I'll move to approve both sets of minutes dated May 17, 2022.
Second.
Motion been made in their second. Is there a need for further discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
I am an aye as well. Motion passes unanimously. All right, next item on the agenda is to consider approval of a series of special one-day wine and malt beverages license to Michael Snowdale on behalf of Stellwagen Beer Company for the Weir River Sunset Picnics to be held on Thursday, June 2nd, June 9th. (Music)
Bill, we're losing you.
Hello?
You could just mute yourself so I recognize you, that'd be great. June 16th and June 23rd, 2022, from 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM. I believe we have Michael on the line as well as Ann Smith White, who are going to present. So, Michael, go ahead, tell us what you want to do. I know we have these before, but you may, uh, have the floor. Go ahead.
Hey, thanks for having me. Yeah, so this is a similar event to the series that we participated in last year at Weir River Farm. I think the trustees host a number of them, so there'll be a number of different breweries throughout the, uh, throughout the summer. But, um, so on Thursday evenings in June, our plan is to, um, to show up with our beer trailer and serve draft beer to the guests of, uh, of the trustees at Weir River. Uh, we'll have the tip-certified pours, um, and, uh, the, uh, the premises haven't changed, uh, for any of the, uh, for any of the events that I'm, that I'm aware of, and you could probably speak a little bit more to that, but the map has been the same, uh, this year as it was last year. So, pretty, pretty straightforward, no, no real changes from, um, from the last few.
All right, Michael, thank you. I see that we have, uh, Ann Smith White on line as well. Ann, do you want to add anything to Michael's presentation?
No, I think he's got it. We did, um, 18 of these last summer, and they were terrific, so we're looking forward to doing another season this, this summer. Um, and we've got, um, Stellwagen is first up in June. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Great. Before I turn it over to my colleagues for questions, as we do normally, we do turn, uh, ask the police chief for input, and I see Chief Jones on the line. Chief, do you have anything you want to add, or sure you reviewed the application?
Good evening. Yes, I have reviewed the application and I have no issues, uh, at all with it.
Fantastic. All right, thanks, chief. All right, let me go to my colleagues, uh, Joe Fisher, any questions or concerns?
This looks great. Uh, no, so I'm seeing this is for four dates in June. Is that correct?
Yes, it is. Four, four Thursdays starting with June, uh, 2nd.
Um, and it's limited to the three-hour brewery, 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM?
Yes.
Right. Um, no, this, this is consistent with what I expected. I've reviewed the application, it looks terrific. Uh, no, no further comments.
Liz?
No questions. I reviewed the application. Um, I'm glad to hear they went so well last year and, um, the Chief Jones not having any concerns. I don't have any questions or concerns either.
Great. All right. Are there any members of the public who'd like to ask any questions? All right. I don't see any hands up. All right, with that then, I would, I would take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the request for a special one-day wine and malt beverages license to Michael Snowdale on behalf of Stellwagen Beer Company for the Weir River Sunset Picnics to be held on Thursday, June 2nd, June 9th, June 16th, and June 23rd, 2022, from 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM.
Second. Is there a need for further discussion? Hearing none, I move the motion forward. All those in favor, by roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
I am an aye as well. The motion carries unanimously. All right, Michael, good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next item on the agenda is to consider approval of a special one-day wine and malt beverages license to Brian Burke on behalf of Burke's Brewing Company Incorporated for the Summer Solstice at World's End, to be held on Saturday, June 25th, 2022, with a rain date of Sunday, June 26th, 2022, from 5:00 PM to 9:30 PM. I know Ann is here on the line as well. Again, Ann's got a, Ann, you got a couple presentations tonight, and I think I saw Brian on the line as well.
Mm-hmm.
Brian, are you here?
Yep.
So Brian, we'll have you start off as well, we'll have you start off first. Go ahead.
Yeah, sure. I think it's very similar event, maybe on a bigger scale than what Mike outlined for the Weir River events. It's, uh, we participated in a very similar event there in the fall for the summer send-off. Uh, we'll be there with our draft beer trailer. I have, uh, three tip-certified servers, including myself, will be present on site. Um, overall, it's, um, fairly, you know, family-friendly, uh, event that went, uh, well last year. We, we hope to replicate that this year. We'll also be sharing beer service with, uh, by our friends at Widowmaker and Vitamin C.
Excellent. All right, three great breweries. Ann, you want to add anything?
Um, it's, this is an event up at the top of Planters Hill at World's End, um, watching the sunset, listening to the Aldous Collins Band. It's going to be a great night. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Great, thanks, Ann. All right, chief, any concerns, uh, with respect to this application?
I've reviewed this application as well, and I have, uh, no issues, uh, with it.
All right. Turn to my colleagues. Liz, any questions or concerns?
Just a question about the attendance. I think I saw a thousand people are expected, is that right, Ann?
Yes, that's about right.
Okay, great. It's a wonderful event, thank you for continuing it.
Long history in town.
Yes, for sure. No, no questions or concerns. Thanks, Bo.
Joe? Just following up on Liz's question, uh, how will parking be handled?
This is one of the events that we park all the visitors up on the hill. Um, so it's out of the neighborhood, cars will come directly into the property and drive out on the carriage roads and up onto Planters Hill, park there.
Um, and, and there's sufficient parking to handle that many, uh, attendees?
Actually, people tend to pile into cars because we charge by car, so.
Oh, good.
It's like the clowns at the circus, frequently. There are fewer cars than you would expect.
Great. Okay, that was my only question. Thank you.
All right. Does any member of the public have any, uh, questions or concerns? I'm just moving through here. I don't see anybody's hand up. Okay. All right, with that then, I will take a motion.
I move to approve the request for a special one-day wine and malt beverages license to Brian Burke on behalf of Burke's Brewing Company, Inc., for the Summer Solstice at World's End to be held on Saturday, June 25th, 2022, with a rain date of Sunday, June 26th, 2022, from 5:00 PM to 9:30 PM.
Second.
All right. All those in favor, by roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
And I am an aye as well, and the motion passes unanimously. All right, good luck, Brian.
Thank you all for your time and consideration, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Next item on the agenda is to consider approval of a special one-day wine and malt beverages license to Colin Foley on behalf of Widowmaker Brewing Company for their Summer Solstice at World's End to be held on Saturday, June 25th, 2022, with a rain date of Sunday, June 26th, 2022, from 5:00 PM to 9:30 PM. So obviously, this is the same event that we've just heard about, but let's just hear from Colin, see if he wants to add anything to what Brian told us. So, right, I think I saw Widowmaker on the line here, but Colin, are you there?
Yeah, I'm there.
All right, go ahead. Do you want to, what, tell us a little bit about what you plan to do on, on these dates?
Yeah, pretty much, uh, almost exactly like Brian. Um, we're actually, we're sending, um, two of our most experienced bartenders, uh, they're actually both the capital managers at the brewery, will be on-site for the event. Um, either going to be doing some cases of beer or bring a portable, um, keg pouring station. Um, but yeah, I mean, it's pretty much the, uh, same as the, what we did, uh, last summer for Ann and the trustees.
Right. Um, Ann, anything to add here?
No, nothing to add.
Okay. Uh, chief, any, any concerns?
Uh, no, nothing with this one either. Uh, reviewed the application and there's no issues.
Thank you. Joe, do you have any, um, additional questions?
Uh, yes, I just want to make sure I understand, um, the entity here. I believe it's WM Brewing Company. Uh, I know that we've, it's, it's referred to here as Widowmaker Brewing Company. Is, is that the same entity?
Yeah, it's, uh, the Widowmaker is the DBA for WM Brewing Co.
Right, but, but the official corporate name is WM Brewing Company.
Yeah, that's correct.
Got it. Okay, uh, no, I've reviewed the application and it's, uh, consistent with what I was expecting. I did note that you are showing an estimated attendance of 1,500. The prior application had it down to 1,000, um, and the, uh, the truth will be somewhere in between, I suspect. Uh, no questions, though. Thank you.
All right, Liz?
Uh, no questions about the application. Um, just to confirm though, Ann, it is a ticketed event, right?
It's a ticketed, it's ticketed by vehicle and not by person.
Okay, okay, got it. No concerns about this, um, this application? Do we, well, when we get to it, Bill, tell me if we need to change the vote language to be the official name of the company.
Okay. Um, okay. Any members of the public, um, have any questions or concerns? Okay, looking through here, I don't see anybody's hand up. So I don't, I don't think we need to change the official name, Joe. What are your thoughts on that?
Uh, as long as this is a registered DBA, um, I, I think it's fine. I mean, the issue would be if, if we issue a license and there's a conflict between what the state has and what we authorize. Um, so I guess we should ask, is the state issuing it to WM Brewing or to Widowmaker?
Colin, can you answer that for?
I'm not sure who the state would issue to. I know that we are registered with the Town of Braintree with the DBA, with the, um, the Town Clerk's Office.
So, I, I would just suggest, um, in fact, maybe I will just make the motion on this, if, if, if you don't mind. Um, so I would move to approve the request for a special one-day wine and malt beverages license to Colin Foley on behalf of WM Brewing Company, Inc., doing business as Widowmaker Brewing Company for the Summer Solstice at World's End to be held on Saturday, June 25th, 2022, with a rain date of Sunday, June 26th, 2022, from 5:00 PM to 9:30 PM.
Second.
Is there a need for further discussion? Our hearing none, roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
And I am an aye as well, so the motion carries unanimously. All right, Colin, good luck.
Yeah, thank you all.
Thank you.
And Ann, good luck to you as well. I think that's your last one for the night, so you can go. You're welcome to, welcome to stay if you'd like.
Thank you all.
All right, thanks, Ann. Good seeing you again. All right, next item on the agenda is to consider approval of the application for a transfer of the retail package store, all alcoholic beverages licensed from AGT Incorporated, doing business as Queen Anne Wine and Spirits, 32 Whiting Street, Regina Marchion manager to RFS Store 135 Incorporated, doing business as Richdale Liquor, 32 Whiting Street, Barnes-Nab Con Manager, and, uh, Scott, I think Scott Golding was going to do the presentation, but I see Jeff Tocchio on the line, so I'll turn it over to Jeff, I think you're up. Turn it over to you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Um, you got me tonight, Scott. Uh, Scott's at soccer up in Maine with his children.
Always good to see you, Jeff.
Likewise. Nice to see everyone. Um, I'm here this evening. Uh, it has to do with the transfer of the Section 15 All Alcohol Liquor License at 32 Whiting Street. Um, AGT, uh, Regina Macioni, they had been operating the Queen Anne, um, Wine and Spirits there. Um, they have since that time, uh, opened up, uh, a new, uh, retail outlet in the new Prevey's, uh, building down in Hanover, which is taking a lot of their time. Uh, it's an opportunity where, uh, Mr. Con, uh, is an operator, owner of Richdale Food Shops, uh, throughout the Commonwealth. He's got several, um, stores, retail, uh, all alcohol, uh, in the Commonwealth as well, has about 15 years worth, 15 years worth of experience in that. He's also tip-certified, we sent that along to you folks, I believe, uh, just today, and uh, he's on as well. I believe Regina Macioni is, uh, if we have any questions of her likewise. Uh, Mr. Con lives in Canton, and, um, we've submitted all of the, the Cory information, uh, all of the other, uh, requested corporate votes, I believe, are in order, and, um, at that point, I think, um, that covers all the front-side information, and we're available to answer any questions that you have.
All right. Uh, Jeff, I, I had a note here that Mr. Con might be on the line too, is, does he want to, would he like to say anything, or are you speaking for him tonight?
Um, I'll speak, uh, for him unless there's some questions that perhaps you may have for him.
Understood, thank you. Okay. Um, Chief Jones, have you reviewed the application? Do you have any concerns or input?
Uh, good evening again. I, I have looked it over and I have no, uh, concerns with the transfer.
Excellent.
Thanks, chief. All right, let me turn to my colleagues with any questions or concerns. Liz, we'll start with you.
Um, so the, the current, um, Queen Anne Liquors that is closing, and then this, the current, the Richdale that's existing will have the liquor license, is that right?
So what happens is, um, the, there's a Richdale that exists that is where the 7-Eleven was, also.
Right.
There he loses a sub-tenant in there. So if looking straight on, uh, Queen Anne's is to the right, and that, you know, that's operated, I think that we opened that. I, I wanted, it was pre-COVID, um, but you know, it hit, it hit probably at a pretty bad spot around there, so that probably makes it two years old, I would want to guess. Um, what'll happen is, this is going to come in, it's a freestanding entity, different corporation, um, so it's, you know, it's going to be a, um, you know, a store next to another one, which is owned by the same parent company, um, but they operate as, you know, independent entities, as, um, they understand, um, you know, just how, how all the stores, uh, you know, operate. It'll definitely be independent, and it's this, uh, RFS Store 135, Inc., which will be the entity.
Okay, great. Thank you for clarifying, Jeff.
Thanks, Liz.
Joe?
I think that, I think this is a thorough application, I reviewed it, I've got no questions.
Great, thank you, Joe.
Any members of the public have any, uh, questions that like to pose to either, uh, Mr. Toccio or us? All right, I don't see anybody with their hand up. Okay, with that then, I will, uh, take a motion.
I will make a motion to approve the application for a transfer of license from AGT, Inc., doing business as Queen Anne Wine and Spirits, 32 Whiting Street, Regina Marchion manager to RFS Store 135 Incorporated, doing business as Richdale Liquor, 32 Whiting Street, Barnes-Nab Con Manager, filed with the Town of Hingham on April 26th, 2022. This approval is subject to the approval of all applicable town boards and departments, and the approval of the Massachusetts Alcoholic Beverages Control Commission.
Second. Is there a need for further discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
And I am as, I am, and I am an aye as well. The motion carries unanimously.
Excellent. Thank you, everyone, we appreciate it. Thank you, chief.
Good luck, Jeff.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
The next item on the agenda is to consider approval of the renewal of license to deal in old or second-hand metals and precious metals filed by Matthew Charamonte, doing business as Amante's Precious Metals, formerly known as Carson City Coins at 38 Whiting Street. And I believe Mr. Charamonte is on the line. If I mispronounce your name, sir, uh, my apologies.
I'm here.
How are you tonight?
Hello, board. Good, good, how are you?
Great. All right, why don't you just tell us a little bit about what you, uh, what's your, what you, about your application and what you're asking us to approve tonight?
Um, I just, uh, wanted the renewal of the precious, uh, the precious metals license for the store. That's pretty much, uh, that's pretty much, that's pretty much it.
Can you, can you tell us?
I got my kids in my, I got my kids in my car with me, excuse me, quiet guys.
Okay. Uh, could you just tell us a little about your business?
Um, it, I'm a coin shop on, uh, in 38 Whiting Street. I've been there, um, since last January. Okay. So I just, I just need a renewal of the license.
Um, chief, have you renewed the application?
Good evening. Yes, I have reviewed the application, and, uh, they are in, uh, compliance with the reporting requirements to the police department. Um, and they've been, uh, very, uh, responsive to any communication from, uh, us.
So no concerns?
No concerns, no.
Okay. Let me turn to my colleagues. Uh, Joe, do you have any questions?
Um, no, we, Bill, you and I reviewed this application last year, uh, I believe in depth, when, when they came in for a, uh, a renewal at that point, and what I'm hearing is, uh, nothing's changed, so I am satisfied, no questions.
Yes, I remember that, yes. Uh, Liz, any questions?
I don't have any questions about the application, but Chief Jones, would you mind just outlining what the reporting requirements are?
Sure, of course. So if they, uh, take in, uh, any items, they're required to, um, get a copy of the, uh, person who's trading it in, their, their ID, sort of license, and then report that, uh, information along with what was, uh, traded in, uh, to the police department, and they're required to hold it for a certain amount of time, uh, we can compare it on, um, you know, for any stolen items or anything like that.
Great. So you haven't had any issues with stolen items or increased crime, right?
No, not at all.
Okay, great. Thank you for confirming that.
You're welcome.
No other questions?
All right, let me just, are there any questions from any members of the public? Let me just scroll through here. All right, I don't see anybody with their hand up. All right, with that, I'll take a motion.
I move to approve the renewal application to deal in old or second-hand metals and precious metals filed with the Town of Hingham on February 17th, 2022, by Matthew Charamonte, doing business as Amante's Precious Metals, formerly known as Carson City Coins, 38 Whiting Street, effective May 1, 2022 through April 30 of 2023.
Second.
All's in favor, uh, all's in favor by roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
And I am an aye as well. The motion carries unanimously. Mr. Charamonte, good luck.
Thank, thank you, board, I, I really appreciate it. Thank you very much.
All right, sir. Have a good evening.
You too. Bye.
All right, the next item on the agenda is to consider approval of the agreement with APC Development Group Incorporated to provide labor, work, and materials for the construction of the South Shore Country Club Maintenance Building. And I do see Kevin Whalen on the line. Kevin, let me turn it over to you, if you don't mind doing a presentation, that'd be great.
Sure, along with me tonight, I have Taylor McDonald, who's the project manager, and Christine Smith, who's the chairman of the Country, uh, Country Club Management Committee. And I also see Kathy Riley, uh, the procurement officer who helped us, uh, you know, steer this through the bidding process and to the end here with a contract in hand. Um, so tonight, we're asking the con, the, uh, select board to award the contract in the amount of $1,915,510 to APC Development of Hanover to provide labor, work, and materials for the construction of the South Shore Country Club Maintenance Building. APC was the lowest qualified bidder. The award went, uh, the bid went out in March and was, uh, due back in April 21st, and we waited, you know, till the, uh, town meeting vote and at the end of April, uh, where we got the additional funds so that we could secure the funds to, uh, award the contract. Uh, this will complete the maintenance building project, uh, we, as you, if you, the board might remember, we split the project into two phases, one being the site work, which is substantially completed this, at this point. Um, all permits have been obtained through the Conserva, Conservation Commission, Historical Commission, and the Planning Board. The site, as I said, the site work has been complete, and that will be done, uh, substantially complete, that, they'll be completely done probably by the end of, uh, May here. So construction will start late July, early August, and will be, the timeframe for construction is approximately seven months.
Kevin, thank you. Uh, let me see, does, uh, Christine, do you want to add anything?
Um, no, we were just pleased with the, uh, with the town meeting votes, and I think everyone's, uh, anxious for this maintenance facility to be done. Um, just as a reminder, it's a, it was, it was identified as a safety issue, it's under the existing pool, which was being demolished, so we tried to fast-track this, um, you know, due to, to the safety issue, and, and, uh, you know, I thank everyone for helping us with the, uh, with the process, and just anxious to move forward.
Great, excellent. How about Taylor, would you like to add anything to, uh, Kevin's presentation?
Um, sure. Uh, the, the bidder that we're going with here, APC, was actually the, the second lowest bidder. Um, I provided a, a bid summary report, um, that I, I'm sure the board has, but, um, the reason we couldn't use the first low bidder was because they actually bid over their single-line limit, um, DCAM, um, rates contractors, and they allow them to bid up to a certain dollar value on, uh, a cumulative amount of projects and also a single project. Uh, they bid over that line about $63,000, um, and even though their DCAM form is being updated in two days, uh, two days following the bid, we couldn't accept it, so we had to go to the second bidder, so lost out on a little bit of money there, um, but we were still able to, to make it work budget-wise, so, um, APC is who the contract is with. Um, we, um, did a deep dive on their DCAM reviews, uh, they have a very positive DCAM rating, and, um, I'm working in the Town of Sandwich right now, the Town of Sandwich is also working with APC on another project, so I spoke with their town manager and assistant town manager, who both gave great, um, reviews of the contractor that we're, uh, getting a contract with here, so, um, the due diligence has been done, and we're ready to move forward and, and get the project done.
All right, thank you, Taylor. And Kathy Riley, do you want to add anything to, um, uh, what's been discussed or the process?
Uh, no, um, obviously Taylor's, uh, OPM, uh, work was really helpful in getting this all, um, through, um, but, um, it, it went well, and I know that, um, they're anxious to get started, so it's, it's all set.
All right, thanks, Kathy.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and, and to everybody, my apologies, again, my camera is malfunctioning, and I'm trying to fix it here, but not going to happen tonight, so can't see my smiling face, but you can see Joe and Liz's smiling face, so let me turn to Joe, and, Joe, do you have any questions or, uh, concerns?
I got some questions. Um, Kathy, I don't know if you're the right person, or who, who would be the right person to answer some of these. Could you review for us what the schedule is for payment, when the contractor gets paid, progress payments, things like that?
Uh, I don't have that. Taylor, do you have that?
Um, it's on a monthly basis, um, so what we've been doing on the, uh, site work portion It's on a monthly basis. So what we've been doing on the site work portion of it is we're getting a pencil copy of their requisition a week before the end of the month. And then at the end of the month, we receive their their final and then it's it's billed out at that point. Everything sent over to the town.
And you, are you billing against the schedule so that, you know, you don't come to the, you know, halfway through the project and it turns out you spent 70% of the money?
Correct, yeah. We we review the requisition we get each month and if they're wrecking, if they're wrecking for anything that is not done, we obviously cross it off and tell them, look, you can't bill for it this month. But usually the contractors know that process. So yes, we don't pay pay the contracts for anything that's not done, certainly. And it's reviewed with the contractor themselves. We, any questions? So it's a pretty smooth process.
Do you, do you do a holdback amount? You know, some contracts, like, you know, 5%, 10% is held back on any requisition until the very end?
Yeah, I believe it's 10% retained here. It's at least five, but I think it's 10 here.
And if you could talk about the completion date, which the contract has, it's February 1 of 2023, is that realistic in your view?
I think so, yes. Yeah, that's substantial completion. So there, you know, that at that point is when the building can be used for its intended use. So at that point, there may still be some, some punch lists going on or some training, things like that. But absolutely, I see that as an attainable schedule.
And what does the contract provide if that schedule is not met?
There's liquidated damages. There's a clause in the specifications and I believe that's $1,000 a day. So I don't think we'll have an issue here getting to that point. It's a pretty simple structure, but there are penalties built into the contract.
Right. And I heard you say that you're satisfied with the quality of work that for this particular contractor based on your due diligence?
Yes.
Which is reassuring because, you know, part of it's money and part of it's making sure that the town gets the value that it that it needs and deserves. So it sounds like you've done your homework and I've got no further questions. Thank you.
Thanks, Joe. Liz.
Yes, thank you for the presentation. It's helpful to hear the the summary and as well as the references. Just to confirm the the amount that we're voting on, is there contingency built in there or is this a guaranteed kind of flat fee or how is that structured?
This, this is their contract amount that we're voting on, but the overall value of the project, there is contingency built into that number, yes.
Okay. And do you know how much that is? Is it like 20% or?
Contingency, I think we're carrying, I want to say 7% if you add them all up. I just don't have the budget in front of me. I'm sorry.
That's okay. All right, thank you.
And one of the things, Liz, too, with the contingency is that, you know, with the site work being being completed, it's it's a much smaller project and it's much more straightforward.
Right, okay. Yes, I know you've done it in stages very intentionally. Thank you, Kevin. No other questions, Bill?
Thank you, Liz.
Bill, I do have one other question if I can add.
Of course, go ahead.
Are are subcontractors going to be part of this project?
They are, yes.
And what sort of vetting process goes on for the subs?
So actually, the the subs that have bid are subs that we've all worked with in the past, either me or the contractor. So we're very comfortable with who we see there.
Got it.
They also have DCAM certification, don't they?
They do, yes. They're all DCAM certified. No, none of them are barred at this point at all. Obviously, the the GC does pick who they want to work with. They don't have to necessarily take the lowest bidder in this process.
Right.
But of the, we have a masonry sub bidder, roofing, plumbing, HVAC and electrical. And of those five, again, we've worked with them. We know who we're getting into bed with, so to speak.
And does the arc, I'm sorry to keep asking questions. Does, is there an architect who's signing off on the request for payment?
Yes.
So are you using the typical AIA forms for for the request for payment or are there, does a GC have his own customized form?
We'll probably be using an AIA form. We haven't gone over the schedule values. We haven't got those from the contractor yet, but we would like to use the AIA form.
Great, that'd be great. Okay, thank you. No, no further questions.
Joe, thank you. All right, do any members of the public have any questions or concerns? Okay, seeing no hands raised, I will take a motion.
I will make a motion to authorize the town administrator to sign the agreement with APC Development Group Incorporated. To provide labor, work and materials for the construction of the South Shore Country Club Maintenance Building in an amount not to exceed $1,915,510.
Second.
Is there need for further discussion? Hearing none, we move to vote, roll call vote. Joe.
Hi.
Liz.
Hi.
And I am an I as well. The motion carries unanimously. So Kevin, Taylor, Christine, Kathy, thanks for all your work and hope you guys have a great night.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is, just want to reiterate that we are actively seeking volunteers to our Talent Bank application process. And we are looking to fill vacancies on different committees throughout town. And for interested residents who would like to serve on committees, please go to our hingham-ma.gov backslash backslash SB website. We can fill out a Talent Bank application. We're in the process of updating what vacancies we have and what committees we have, but we have a lot of wonderful committees and we hope to start interviewing applicants later in June. But, you know, we are so fortunate to have so many great applicants, fill so many great committees in town. But if you are interested in serving on a committee or getting involved with town government, that's where you start. So please, if you have any questions, you can reach out to the select board office or one of us and we'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. And and, you know, please volunteer and get involved. It's, you know, the three of us have been very involved with town government for many years. And I, I think I speak for all three of us and tell you that it's been, it's a wonderful experience and it's just a wonderful opportunity to get involved. Joe, Liz, would you like to add anything?
Nope, just echoing your comments that all are welcome and this is a good opportunity for members of the community to connect not only with the town, but with one another who have interests that may be similar to to yours. So please reach out and fill in an application that you can get online.
Yes, nothing to add, other than encouraging people to to get involved. It's a great opportunity to meet people and learn more about the town and give to the town.
Michelle, did I, is that all the information is? And we're going to be updating the vacancies soon, correct?
Yes, so we'll have Sharon's working on compiling all the vacancies. There's a lot. There's something for everyone here. Most of the terms for people expire on June 30. And like you said, I will quickly show this. The easiest way, I think, if you go to our homepage and hover over this "How do I?" button, you'll see "How do I volunteer?" right down here and it will lead you to the Talent Bank application. It's a simple form for people to fill out. It goes to our office and then we will send that to the board for your consideration.
Great.
Great, thanks for doing that. Appreciate it. Okay, next item on the agenda is the COVID-19 update. And with Tom away, I think Art, you're going to be taking this tonight?
Yes, Bill, thank you. In in Tom's absence, I'll share the latest we have on COVID information, COVID-19 information. The Federal Center for Disease Control continues to determine Plymouth County's COVID-19 community level to be high. And at this level, the CDC recommends wearing a well-fitting mask indoors in public places, regardless of vaccination status. Staying up to date with COVID-19 vaccines and boosters. Following the CDC recommendations for isolation and quarantine. And getting tested if you've been exposed. On the 13th of May, we informed the Hingham community of the CDC's determination and its recommendations through our website and posting on town buildings. Our COVID-19 updates webpage, which we update on Mondays, includes updated numbers for Hingham. The following data is for, is from the 1st of May through the 14th of May, compared to the previous two-week period of April 24th to the 7th of May. Excuse me. Hingham's 14-day average incidence rate is 56.8, up from 42.3, a 34% increase over the previous two-week period. And Hingham's 14-day average positivity rate is 14.6%, up over 11% from the previous week. It's important to note that these data represent PCR laboratory tests and do not include, generally do not include at-home tests. And this increase, which is the rate of increase is actually slowing a bit from our last report. That increase in cases could be due to increased travel, vacations, graduations and in parties this season. The CDC looks at the combination of three metrics to measure that COVID-19 level in our county. The data is updated weekly on Thursdays, based on new admissions and inpatient bed metrics, based on the current level of new cases per 100,000 population on the last seven, over the last seven days. We look at that on Thursdays and we'll provide updates based on any changes in that data and we will take we'll take coordinated action as needed.
I'm certainly open to any questions you may have. Any questions, Liz?
No questions. Thank you, Art.
Joe.
Yeah, Art, it just, I just would like you to emphasize in your report, you know, the type of assistance that the town offers to seniors and others who might need assistance in getting, getting transportation to a pharmacy to obtain vaccinations. I, you know, they, I believe they should contact the senior center or 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 any other location that they should try to reach out to for transportation.
That, that's right, Joe. Our senior center can provide that that kind of support for seniors who may need it.
Great. Thank you. Nothing else.
Thanks, Joe. Any member of the public have any questions about the COVID-19 update? Okay, seeing none. All right, next item on the agenda is public comment. Just want to note that the select board has set aside 15 minutes for public comment for items that fall under the purview of the select board and are not already on tonight's agenda. If any guests wish to speak, please seek to be recognized. Once recognized, state your name and address. And address your comments through the chair. Comments will be limited to approximately three minutes per speaker. Must relate to topics within the scope of the responsibilities of the select board. Because are encouraged, encouraged to present their remarks in a respectful manner and not to indulge in personalities. The public comment period is not a time for debate by members of the select board. The select board is not adopting or endorsing any of the comments made during the public comment period. With that being said, does anybody have any public comment this evening? Don't see any hands up. Okay. All right, let me turn to town administrator and select board report. So Art, I'll turn it back to you.
Sure, thank you, Bill. I just have one, one item to share this evening. It's just an update on our blood drive planning, which we have slated for next Tuesday, 31st, from 11:00 AM to 4:00 PM at the senior center here in the Town Hall complex. Addressed being 224 Central Street. I'm pleased to report that we are fully subscribed. All of our donation slots are full. We look forward to a very busy time on that day. And more importantly, the results making a meaningful contribution to to lives here in the, in the, in the region and in Massachusetts.
All right, thank you. Michelle.
Thank you. Just one item as well. Just wanted to let you know that the town has received a $50,000 Shared Streets and Spaces grant for the purchase of snow removal equipment. I believe this is specifically for clearing sidewalks more quickly in some of the major storms. And they're hoping to use it, you know, near schools, the downtown commercial district and some of the main streets in town. So this is just thank you to J.R. Frye, Randy Sylvester and Matt Cahill for putting this together for the town.
Michelle, thank you. Turn to select board reports. Let's start with Liz.
Nothing to report tonight, Bill. Thank you.
All right, Joe.
I just one item to remind residents that the town will be having its annual Memorial Day observance on Monday, May 30. The moderator, Michael Puzo, starts it promptly at 11:00 AM. So if you know Mr. Puzo, you know it starts exactly at 11:00 AM. And it's scheduled to be outside, although I believe if it's inclement weather, it will be conducted inside at the Sandborne Auditorium. And all residents and non-residents of the town are welcome. That's it. Thank you, Bill.
Thanks, Joe. I was going to mention that. So thank you for doing that. The only item I have, you know, last weekend was a very, very busy weekend in town. All weekend long, there were events going on. On Saturday, there were, there was the Hingham Patrolman Union and the Veterans Council putting flags on graves at Hingham Cemetery. There was Brigham going on in downtown. There was a great effort to support Afghan refugees in Hingham. On Sunday, there was a battle of Grape Island. It was the Unity Council put a nice event on. And, you know, it just reminded me, and the three of us participated in a lot of these events. And it just reminded me just how wonderful this community really is and how many great people we have doing great things. So it was really nice to be, you know, coming out of the pandemic and be able to see people face to face again and do great stuff. So the select board will be meeting again briefly on Friday morning at 10:30. So I'll see everybody then. But with that, I will take a motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn.
Second.
All's in favor, roll call vote. Liz.
Hi.
Joe.
Hi.
I'm an I as well. Have a good evening.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.